I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A roll call has been taken, Ms. Ryerson?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. And we have an amendment to the agenda, and that would be parking recreation, and that would be for the amount of eighty thousand four hundred and seventy-three dollars and thirty cents. So with that amendment, I am looking for an adoption to the agenda.
It's a move, Your Honor.
Motion made by Mr. Barrington, seconded by Mr. Herter. Any other additions or corrections? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Approval of ten eighteen twenty-two common council minutes. Get a motion for that?
Make that motion.
Motion made by Mr. Beesaw.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Haas. Any additions or corrections to those? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried by all. Authorization to pay the bills, Mr. Dorsey.
Sir, I make a motion that we pay the bills in the amount of one million one hundred and eighty-seven thousand seven hundred and seventy-four dollars and sixty-five cents.
Motion made by Mr. Dorsey, seconded by Mr. Herter. Any correct additions or corrections? Please cast your ballots. Motion carried by all. All right. Being seven oh two, we will call the public hearing on the twenty-twenty-three budget as open. Any public comment? Any public comment? Any public comment? Hearing none, we will close the public hearing for twenty-twenty-three budget. Moving along to standing in special committees, we'll start off with the Budget Committee of the whole, and with that I will read each one off needing a motion and a second before we vote. Approval of the debt service levy in the amount of nine hundred and forty-two thousand five hundred and eighty-seven dollars?
It's a move.
Motion made by Mr. Dorsey, seconded by Mr. Beesaw. Any additions or corrections to that? Further discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion carried by all. Next, approval of the general fund tax levy of two million nine hundred and seventy-eight thousand seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars and the debt service levy in the amount of nine hundred and forty-two thousand five hundred and eighty-seven dollars for a total of three million nine hundred and twenty-one thousand three hundred and fourteen dollars. Any additions or corrections? Can we get a motion on that?
Make that motion.
Motion made by Mr. Haas, seconded by Ms. Croy. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. That motion is also carried ten zero. Approval of the wheel tax fund budget as presented.
It's a move, Your Honor.
Motion made by Mr. Barrington, seconded by Mr. Fache. Any more discussion? Please cast your ballots. That motion is also carried ten zero. Move along to approval of the resolution to authorize one hundred thousand dollars in short-term borrowing.
Make that motion.
Motion made by Mr. Beesaw, seconded by Mr. Fache. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. That motion is carried ten zero. Thank you all. Next on the agenda is Board of Public Works, Mr. Barrington.
Thank you. Board of Public Works met on Monday, October thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two. Members present Barrington, Ritchie, Herter, Dorsey, Excuse Haas, council members Mayor Herter, Beesaw, Roberts, Melinda Croy, others Chad, Robert Garsky, Director of Public Works, Ben Grue, Waste Water Treatment Plant Operator Meeting called at five fifteen. Motion made and approved to accept the agenda. Motion carried by all. Public input, there was none. The next item was wastewater treatment plant update. Wastewater notes were included in the packet. At this time, there were no questions. The next, we had a public hearing to adopt the wastewater budget. Board of Public Works acts as the Sewer Utility Commission. Chairman Barrington opened a public hearing for the two thousand twenty-three wastewater budget, calling three times for public input. There being none, Barrington asked for a motion to adopt the agenda. Motion passed by all. And the next was a discussion on the roadway islands on Cedarhurst Drive. A resident expressed interest in removing the islands on Cedarhurst Drive. It was discussed that there are no safety hazards associated with the island, and they do help to slow down traffic. It was found that the cost of renewal could be used for better purposes. Motion made and seconded to leave the islands as they are. Motion carried by all. The next item was the director's report. The director's memo was included in the agenda packet and reviewed by the board. Service anniversary report. Glenn Beesaw, street operator, completed thirty-five years as of November fourth. Edward Berto, street operator, completed two years of service on November ninth. On Friday, October twenty-first, M.O. Construction was able to make repairs to the outfall at eleven hundred West Northwater Street. This has been an ongoing problem that grew every time we received a heavy rainfall. With low water level in the river, the fix could take place without a coffer dam, saving a lot of money. The last round of leaf and brush pickup has begun. Please get your debris out in a tidy manner so that you won't be missed. Future agenda items. Discussion about large item disposal services and a fee for using the waste yard waste system. No further discussion. Meeting was called to adjourn at five forty-three. That's all I have tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Barrington. Finance and personnel, Mr. Dorsey.
Yes, Your Honor. The Finance Personnel Committee met Wednesday, November second. Meeting was called to order at five fifteen. City Clerk Nicole Ryerson presented the weights and measures fee proposal. The proposal, recommended by Appleton Health Department, would add an estimated three thousand one hundred and ninety-three dollars in revenue for two thousand twenty-three. This would be a net gain for the city as there is no increase to the cost of the service. Motion was made by Fache and seconded by Beesaw to recommend the council approval of the weights and measures fee proposal. A motion was made by Beesaw and seconded by Barrington to recommend the council a resolution urging the legislator and governor to fix a broken system of funding critical local services. Minister Hearth will be extending invitation for state legislators to attend a meeting for discussion on the state revenue sources. Financial Director Accu provided updates to the committee on the tax levy using the updated assessment information. A motion was made by Barrington and seconded by Beesaw to recommend the council approval of the two thousand twenty-three budget ordinance. Finance directors' monthly reports were presented. Finance director report was discussed. Motion was made by Barrington and seconded by Fache to move into closed session. There was no statement or action from the closed session. There was no discussion or action on the two thousand twenty-three pay plan. The committee adjourned while in closed session, and the next regularly scheduled Finance Committee meeting will be held in the council chambers on December seventh at five fifteen. I need approval of the monthly license list.
Motion made by Mr. Dorsey.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Herter. For the approval of the monthly license list, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Make a motion to approve the two thousand twenty-three weights and measure fee schedule?
Second.
Motion been made by Mr. Dorsey. Who seconded that? Mr. Fache. For approval of the two thousand twenty-three weights and measures fee schedule, please cast your ballots. Ms. Croy. Thank you. That motion is carried by all.
We look to consider waiving the rules to adopt an ordinance upon one reading.
Motion made by Mr. Dorsey.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Ritchie. Please cast your ballots. That motion carried ten zero.
Make a motion to approve the city two thousand twenty-three budget ordinance?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Dorsey, seconded by Mr. Fache, to approve city two thousand twenty-three budget ordinance. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. Mr. Fache. That motion is carried ten zero also.
For motion of resolution urging legislator and governor to fix the broken system of funding critical local services.
Second.
That motion been made by Mr. Dorsey, seconded by Mr. Barrington. Any further discussion on that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
That is all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Dorsey. Move along to parking recreation, Mr. Beesaw.
Thank you, Your Honor. Parking rec committee met on Tuesday, November first. Committee members present were Beesaw, Fache, Haas, Ritchie, Rote, and Jim Jaeger, Citizens' member. Councilmember present, Mayor Mark Herter, Mike Barrington, Dave Dorsey, Tim Roberts, Dennis Herter, and Melinda Croy. Others present, Ginger Sol, Director of Parking Rec, Chad Hearth, City Administrator. Meeting was called to order at five fifteen. Motion made by Haas, seconded by Fache, moved to approve the agenda. The motion was carried by all. Public input, there is none presented. Review of two thousand twenty-three capital projects requested. Ginger aren't, should say that, Ginger presented and led a discussion on the draft, the two thousand twenty-two department capital projects and equipment list. No action was further was needed on this agenda item. Veterans Memorial Transfer Responsibility. At the September meeting, Jim Jaeger, Veterans Memorial Foundation member, presented a letter of request from the foundation to transfer responsibility of the memorial of the Parks and Recreation Department. Foundation listed three specific requests. An ad hoc meeting with the foundation and the committee, funds to be transferred for the memorial needs, and to provide website and brochure updates to the public advertising the new contract, information to be directed towards the Park and Rec Department. Ginger thanked the Veterans Memorial Foundation on the department's behalf for the hard work that was dedicated to the memorial. Motion made by Ritchie and seconded by Haas made a motion for approval of the transfer of responsibility to the Veterans Memorial, the Department of Parks and Recreation, including the funds from the foundation deposited into the city's fund for the memorial maintenance. Motion was carried by all. That will be brought to council. Spectrum Charter Updates. Chad Hearth presented a League of Municipalities article with an update provided by the Executive Director, Mary Cordona. The article explained that unless Wisconsin law is changed to require video service providers to take responsibility for modernizing carriage of pig excess channels, discussion on the importance of the channels in the London Citizens Committee members requested Chad to direct Vista, video producing, marketing producer, to research used equipment availability on the market now. No further action was needed. Seasonal Wage Schedule. In two thousand twenty-three, there will be only one minor change to the seasonal part-time wage schedule. Upon the third anniversary of the employee staff, we'll get an additional fifty cent raise to encourage longevity in returning staff. Motion is made by Haas and seconded by Fache to accept the seasonal part-time staff wage schedule as presented. Motion was carried by all. Director's report was included in the agenda packet and reviewed by the committee. Chad noted that Ginger completed twenty years of the city of New London on October twenty-eighth. Chairman's report, none presented, committee members, none presented. Future agenda items, discuss future of the old municipality garage site. Next park and recreational meeting to be held on Tuesday, December sixth at five fifteen. There being no further discussion, motion made by Fache, seconded by Haas, moved to adjourn at six oh five. Motion was carried by all. I would look for council's approval of the Veterans Memorial Transfer of Responsibilities.
Second.
Motion been made by Mr. Beesaw, seconded by Mr. Barrington, for approval of the transfer responsibilities of the Veteran Memorial to Department of Parks and Recreation, including the funds from the foundation to be deposited into the city fund for the memorial maintenance. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. That motion is carried ten zero.
I would look for a motion to approve the seasonal wage schedule.
Motion made by Mr. Barrington, seconded by Mr. Herter, for approval of the season part-time staff wage schedule. Any further discussion on that?
Motion's made by Beesaw.
What's that?
You said motion made by me. You said motion by Beesaw.
Oh, motion made by Beesaw. My correction. Thank you. Any other discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion carried ten zero.
That's all I have, Your Honor.
Ah, one more.
Took out the change order. I would look for a motion to approve the change order amount of eighty thousand, what's that? Eighty thousand four hundred and seventy-three dollars and thirty cents.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Beesaw, seconded by Mr. Dorsey. Any further discussion on that? Please cast your ballots. Mr. Roberts, Mr. Herter. Thank you. Motion carried by all.
Now, that's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Beesaw. Move right along in the Planning Commission, would you please?
Planning Commission met on Thursday, October twenty-sixth. Meeting was called to order at five fifteen. Those in attendance were Chairman Beesaw, Jay Bessett, Donna Gabbert, Mayor Mark Herter, and Jamie Walbrook. Others in attendance, Building Inspector, Zoning Administrator David Vincent, City Administrator Chad Hearth, Melinda Croy, Second District, John Haas, Second District, Tim Roberts, District Four, and Eric Fowler presented Cedar Corporation Comprehensive Plan Facilitator. Meeting was called to order at five fifteen. The group participated in the pledge of allegiance. A motion was made by Walbrook to adopt the agenda and seconded by Bessett, carried by all. The September fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two meeting minutes were reviewed. A motion to accept the minutes was made by Bessett and seconded by Mayor Herter, carried by all. The first item on the agenda was discussion and updated the comprehensive plan. Eric Fowler from Cedar Corp led the discussion. We reviewed and discussed draft of Chapter One, issues of opportunities, along with the draft of Chapter Two, population and housing. The last item on the agenda was a draft of a newly proposed fee schedule for the Building Department. There was discussion from several of the members present to gain some clarification on why the fees are necessary for the department. The goal is updating our fee schedule is to allow the Building Department move forward, self-funding, and not be supplemented, or minimal support for the general budget. Commission members were asked to review the draft proposal and provide comments to the Building Official, Zoning Administrator, to allow the fee schedules to move forward, a recommendation to the council for approval. There will need to be an additional steps involved for the adoption process. The next meeting date has been moved from Thursday, November first, two thousand twenty-two. Note, while preparing minutes, we decided to change the next meeting date to December fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two. A motion was made to adjourn by Mayor Herter, seconded by Gabbert, carried by all. Meeting adjourned at six thirty-two, and that's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Beesaw. Economic Development, Mr. Dorsey.
Yes, Your Honor. The Economic Development Committee met Tuesday, October twenty-fifth. Meeting was called to order by Vice Chairman Haas at five fifteen. The September twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-two minutes were reviewed. Hearth introduced Patrick Gatterman and Mark Spears from the Small Business Development Center of Stevens Point, who provided information about what the SBDC has to offer. Gatterman started his presentation by explaining that the SBDC provides free consulting to small businesses and has locations all over, at all UW campuses, campuses in Wisconsin. SBDC is well-known for assisting organizations in developing business plans, but each campus may have different programs they offer based on a need in that area. Some examples include trainings for QuickBooks, digital marketing strategies, and H.R. laws. Gatterman also talked about successful trends he has seen with community placemaking, the benefits of a strong city-chamber relationship, and how to start the process to request consultation with SBDC. Bishop and Kapinski both reiterated that the SBDC is their first and one of the most important resources for anyone starting a business. The committee thanked both Gatterman and Spears for coming and providing the information on what the SBDC can offer in New London businesses. Committee also discussed different options for replacing a message on the city's Highway Forty-five billboard. The first option is to wrap the billboard with different advertisements. The estimated cost for wrapping the two sides would be between five and, or six and seven thousand dollars. Hearth also was asked and did some research on digitizing the sign. It was determined that the current structure would not support the weight of a digital sign and is considered non-conforming to the DOT's current classifications. Because it's non-conforming, it does not, because it's non-conforming, it does not require a permit if the sign has not changed in size or lights are added. To digitize a sign, the old sign would have to be removed, a new support structure would have to be installed, new electric service would add, and possibly permits for working in the wetlands. More design work would need to be done to determine the exact cost, but a preliminary sign, design for a ten-by-fourteen sign would be over a hundred and twelve thousand. Hearth felt the size of a sign would be too small for that location, it would need to be at least double the size for traffic driving at fifty-five miles an hour. The committee showed some interest in adding a digital sign to a future wish list, but felt re-wrapping a sign with a new message wasn't in the city's best interest at this time. Roberts pointed out that it may never, that it may even be a benefit to change the message on an annual basis instead of once every four to five years. Motion was made to rewrap, or to add the cost to rewrap the Highway Forty-five billboard with a new advertisement to the two thousand twenty-three capital project request list for future consideration. Hearth provided an update from the Visiting Session Workshop that was funded with the East Central Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission Technical Assistance Grant. The workshop was held on October eleventh at Familiar Grounds and facilitated by staff from heirs and associates. The morning visiting session had about fifteen people attended who provided information about the needs of the alley for downtown businesses, the benefits of the river, and the appearance of the rear, rear facade, the rear facades. In the afternoon, the consultants came up with some ideals and created a presentation. Some talking points from the presentation include consider running, consider to turn the parking lot in Saint John's, Saint John's Park to provide access from the alley and Northwater Street. Consider more murals or a funky facade theme for the buildings. Consider a candeliver-style pedestrian boardwalk on top of the river wall to keep the alley open for vehicles, and mimic design elements like pavement color or lighting from Northwater Street to the alley to create a similar design flow between the two areas. The committee expressed interest in researching the possibility of turning the parking lot on Saint John's Park and to work on design elements to showcase off-street parking options. The consultants will put together a final report for their, from their ideals and do a presentation. Chamber Director's Business Report, there are currently five commercial buildings for sale, hillbys, at three hundred Pearl Street, businesses included. Three ten Northwater Street, there's MK flooring, it's a building only. Coils Tire can either be leased or bought. The Grant Cinema Theater would be the business included. Advantage Sign and Graphics, the owner is retired and interested in leasing her business or building or selling the building. Rhonda Olson from American Family Insurance at sixteen twenty Northwater Street is retiring in December, but looking at hiring a new agent for the office. There have been seventeen Main Street bounce-back grants have been awarded in New London for a total of a hundred and seventy thousand dollars in investments in the New London business community. City Administrator's Report, Hearth provided a verbal update to the SDS, or SCS Downtown Riverfront Housing Project. Planning Commission is working on updating the city's comprehensive plan and recently updated the economic development section of the plan. This information was provided to the committee for review. There was no public comment. The next committee meeting will be scheduled for Tuesday, November twenty-ninth, at five And that is all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Dorsey. All right, moving in two minutes, and reports distributed in your packet, and those will stand as read. Reports of officers in recent events and announcements to the public. We'll start off with the mayor, myself. I have an appointment this month to, of Jeff Hanskey, to the Planning Commission in replacement of Brandy Buss. This is also in confirmation of the council, so I'll need a second, or a motion and a second.
Make that motion.
Motion made by Mr. Roberts, who seconded? By Mr. Dorsey. Any further discussion on that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion is carried. And with that, I'd like to thank all staff for their years of service, for service to the city. As we celebrate Veterans Day, this past Friday on November eleventh, I'd like to extend my sincere thank you to all the, that have served and those that continue to serve our country. And please join me in saying thank you to our veterans that work for you every day as city staff, along with city council and committee members. This weekend also starts the gun deer season. Please have a safe and successful season and a very blessed Thanksgiving. And that is all I have. We'll move right along into the city administrator, Mr. Hearth.
Thank you, Your Honor. A couple economic development topics. First of all, you just heard that Chairman Dorsey talked about at the Economic Development Committee meeting. We had representatives from the Small Business Development Center talk about what programs they offer. If you are a small business or are interested in starting a small business, we do have that video on our YouTube channel. If you go to YouTube and you look up New London Access, you can watch that video to see again what the SBDC has to offer this area. For our next economic development meeting, we're working on two more speakers. One would be Jesse Cuff. He is the Wapaka County Veteran Service Officer. They have a new Veterans Entrepreneurial Grant Program that Wapaka County is offering. So if you are a veteran and looking at a small, and I don't have all the details of this program yet, but if you are a veteran, looking at either expanding or starting a business, this might be a grant program for you, so we invite you to the next economic development meeting for that. And also, we are going to be inviting Beth Nash from Inspire Wapaka County. Inspire represents and approaches, there's a team workforce relationship that this program is offering, trying to get students into the workforce and talk about that talent pipeline within Wapaka County. So we're hopefully going to have both those representatives there. So if you're interested in that, the next economic development meeting, sorry, is November twenty-ninth at five fifteen. And then lastly, with the gracious donation that First Aid Bank has given the city and the New London Public Library Museum Board, the city now is setting its sights on selling the property that is across from the library museum that was once going to be the annex property. We do have an RFP out, it's on the city's website, so if you are a developer or a business owner that's looking at expansion on a clean, ready-to-build site, that's a great location for you to look at in our downtown. You can check off, check out that RFP again on the city's website. If you go to newlondonwi.org, click on Business, then Economic Development, that RFP is there. If you've got any questions, you can call me at the office. Otherwise- Otherwise, proposals are due December twenty-ninth. And that is all.
Thank you, Mr. Hearth. Next on the ballot is Chief Police, Mr. Schleeder.
Thank you, Your Honor. As it snows out tonight, I'd just remind everyone that our winter parking ordinance is in effect, so make sure your cars are off the road from three AM to six AM to, so our street department can make sure to get the roads plowed when needed. And also, I'd like to throw out a thank you to Walmart of New London. I just received information that once again, they're going to support our shop with the cop this year, so we'll be able to buy some gifts for a few families coming up here real soon. So thanks to them, we'll be able to keep that going. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Mr. Schleeder. Director of Public Works, Mr. Garsky.
Thank you, Your Honor. New London Street Department will continue collecting yard waste, even though the snow is fine and the temps are dropping. With the low temps, some of the debris might freeze down onto the road surface, but we'll do our best to grab as much as possible. This is also a good time to mention snowplow safety for motorists. Please stay back at least fifty feet behind a snowplow so the operator can see you in the mirrors. If you are approaching an oncoming plow, they will be at the center line with their plow to clear the full lane. Move over a little bit so they have enough room to clear the entire center line. And that is all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Garsky. Moving along to Director of Parks and Recreation, Mrs. Soul.
Thank you. Morgan at the Rec Department would like to extend a huge thank you to all those that supported the Parks and Recreation Department at the Haunted Trail this year. We had more than two hundred people come through, and it was a great success. Coming up very soon, the Winter Wonderland on the Wolf will be with the Chamber of Commerce, and the Rec Department will be holding a reindeer boogie directly after the parade at Familiar Grounds, so the kids can come, have cookies and hot chocolate, and entertainment with Yo DJ. And then, we are also, also offering a holiday drive, looking for items for the Community Food Pantry, the Salvation Army, and the Mission of Hope House. There will be boxes at the Washington Center Gym, the Senior Center, the Aquatic and Fitness Center, and the municipal building here. And with that, the program extends at the fitness center, or at the gym, with the fitness classes, and if you bring in a item, the exchange would give you a free pass for the fitness classes that we have, and you have four chances to do that with us. So a lot of things going on for the holidays, and we wish you a happy Thanksgiving as well.
Thank you, Mrs. Soul. Fire Chief, Wilfred Don't See Him, Mr. Ritchie, you taking that?
Yeah, we'd like to recognize Anthony Romberg for three years of service.
Thank you, Mr. Ritchie. Utility Manager, Mr. Bessett.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to present to the mayor and the council the utilities' tax payment in lieu of taxes for seven hundred and forty-five thousand, three hundred and ninety-six dollars. Electric crews found some porcelain cutouts broken this month, one at N thirty-eight, twenty-five Mill Street on November third, and then two at the Northwoods Village on November tenth. Amcor Flexibles was awarded eighty-four thousand dollars in incentive funding from WPPI for their application to the RFP for the Energy Efficiency Program. And a reminder to the public, you can bring three items to the Washington Center Food Pantry for a string of LED Christmas lights provided by the utilities. They will also take any old Christmas lights to be recycled. They're open for donations only on Tuesdays from eight AM to ten AM, and that started November eighth and it ends December twenty-seventh. And then last, Your Honor, I'd like to recognize Mike Frederick, my electric supervisor, for thirty-nine years of service with New London Utilities this month. That's all I have.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Bessett. City Clerk Rierson.
I would just like to draw your attention to the packets, the items, if you would like to be on the ballot for the spring election, are all in there, as well as a checklist for anyone up for reelection or any citizens interested in running for council.
Thank you. And with that, we will move on to closed session for the following statutory exemptions. One nine point eight-five subsection one, subsection G. Conferring with legal counsel for the governing body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation, which it is or is likely to become involved regarding five fifteen and five nineteen West Northwater Street. Can I get a motion to go into closed session?
Second.
Motion, motion made by Mr. Herter, seconded by Mr. Dorsey. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. I'd like to invite City Attorney Stackbauer, City Administrator Hearth, Building Inspector Mr. Vincent, and City Clerk Mrs. Rierson. That is nine.
That's not right. Sorry. That should be a yes. I don't know what happened.
I can note it.
Change that? We'll note that in the records. So that would be ten. All in favor for a yes? We're in closed session.